...barely meet the four-way stop warrants.
But if I may.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is the March 28th meeting of the Administrative Committee of the Moscow City Council. On my right is Dan Carskaylin, and on my left is John Weber. My name is Jim Boland, and we're ready to start the meeting. We'll start off with the approval of the March 14th meetings, meeting minutes.
I wouldn't move if we approved them.
I wasn't here, but I'll second it.
Okay. I guess since we were the ones that were here, we'll go ahead and approve those, with Dan abstaining from that. The second item on the agenda is the 2016 Weed Spray Agreement. Tyler Palmer's gonna present that to us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, so this is our annual Weed Spray Agreement that we put in place. This is for the maintenance of the city rights of way. You know, as you well know, we have ninety-plus miles of right of way that we've gotta keep looking decent and keep the noxious weeds at bay. And so this is the contract that does that. It's always kinda funny to me, whenever you see a dystopian movie, the first thing they do for the set is let the weeds grow in the cracks of the streets and let the leaves accumulate. And so, we're trying to keep ourselves from becoming a dystopic future here. So yeah, that's what the purpose of this is. We have a chemical list. We've worked in close conjunction for several years with our Sustainable Environment Commission. We have them review our chemical list. We've had experts, several different experts, come and consult with us in the formation of this list, and also meet with the Sustainable Environment Commission to make sure that we have the appropriate information. The, I'd like to point out that the items that are on this list for our uses, the products that are on here, it doesn't mean that those are used on every street by any stretch of the imagination. We have a very minimalist approach to our weed spray. We do what's necessary, take care of what's necessary, and this is basically a toolkit. And so it provides our contractor, who is Shoal Brothers, with whom we've had a contract for several years, they're very familiar with the issues. And so having them contracted for such a long time does, has a lot of benefits, one of which is they know which types of weeds emerge in which areas, and so that we can be really efficient with our use of the chemicals that are on the list. We've got a very reasonable bid from them again this year, in the amount of $12,691.62, and so we would hope that the council would approve the contracts, so we can keep the weeds at bay.
John?
I would, I'm totally in favor of this. Shoal Brothers has been around for a long time, they do a real good job, and the program works really quite well. I do have a question, though. Can we have them, and then pay, spray the yard also? Or while they're out spraying, do you just want them dealing with the city stuff?
Have them spray the...
Like my yard?
Oh. You know, they, they do a lot of spraying throughout the city, and so I know that, you know, if somebody contacts them personally, they could set it up and maybe try and coordinate timing on those sorts of things.
So that wouldn't be a problem?
No, I mean, they, they work here in the city, so they could, they could contract with any individual resident.
So in that same vein, could you have the paving people pave my driveway as well?
If you call them and pave it, whatever you guys set up individually.
I just got one thing, I guess, just the fact that we only have about ten or twelve people that don't want spray in front of their house kinda speaks to the fact that we have pretty good experience with these guys, and they, and they know what they're doing, and they're not killing everybody's yard, or their, or whatever plants they have nearby. So I think that speaks well to the fact that we're, we're doing good business with them, and they're, they're doing good to take, take care of the streets. So I'd go ahead and move that we, move this for, recommend approval, and go ahead and put it on consent agenda.
Yeah, I would say consent agenda.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tyler. The next item on our agenda here is the 1912 Center Monument Sign Concept Approval Request, with Dwight Curtis and Jenny Kostroff presenting.
Yes.
Well, good afternoon. I'll pretty much turn this over to Jenny, but the bottom line is getting ready to put in signage for the 1912 Center, you know, permanent signage, and they have a little different sign that they'd like to use compared to our norm. It's not without precedence, though. We do have monument signs here for city facilities already, but with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jenny.
Hi. So we've had a chance to show this concept around several places. Heart of the Arts presented it to our Development Committee as a concept, and we worked it through a little bit, and then we got it drawn up, and then have now presented it to the Historic Preservation Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission, who are both, oh, and also the Arts Commission. So we went to all of those to make sure that it's the nine that you didn't like, it's not the two.
Oh, I can't remember.
Yeah, the nine didn't have the little tapered look in that, that...
Is it the same picture?
Dan's picking on this picture. Yeah, it's because I couldn't, I didn't wanna pay to get it, like, fixed up. So, but the concept is that we would tie in with the historic look of the facility and do a mosaic tile 1912 Center, that underneath would have the street address 412 East Third Street, but it would not have Heart of the Arts on it, it would not have the City of Moscow on it, it would keep the building its own standalone entity, so that people would identify the building with the building, and then the City of Moscow won't be fielding as many questions by having their name on it in a way that's going to make people call Parks and Rec Office to book it. And so we think that this allows the best flexibility going forward in terms of management of the facility, for whomever is managing it, that that sign doesn't make an identifying mark. We have put for, we've applied for several grants for it, and received $2,000 from the Leito County Community Foundation, and $500 at this point from the Moscow Food Co-op, as well as we've made an application into the Idaho Community Foundation as well. The signage is highly desired by all of the different folks that use the facility to help identify the location for people who haven't been there before, and at this point we have nothing on the building that says 1912 Center. So it's overdue. And as a part of your packets, you have the, the concept drawing for it as well. Do you have some questions for me about it?
Yeah?
What, what financial support are you looking for from the city?
None.
That's a good answer.
That's what I thought. I thought that might help my cause. Like I said, we've got grant funding that we've applied for, as well as, we'll make up the difference with our rentals of the facility, as well as donations from individuals that would like to be part of this project, and the goal is to have it completed by August of this year. We're planning once, so this is a concept, but we will be hiring a mosaic artist to put together their final concept before we actually produce the piece, and so as a part of that review process, so that I don't have to take it all the way to the council, we'll be going back to Parks and Recreation to share with them that, and if they have an issue with it, we'll bring it to council. So, just so that you don't have to say, "Oh, great, go ahead, build this thing." But they will be larger than three feet per letter, so that you can really see it from the street, and also as a part of your packets, I included a hillside view, so that you'd see where the intended spot is for it on the hill.
It'll be...
Facing out towards Third Street, but pointing more towards downtown.
Okay. That, and then it's kind of partway up the hill?
Little bit up the hill, so that it's not down right on the sidewalk at all, it'll be in the hillside. There's actually, when it's not covered in snow, there's a little indicating mark where we've got electricity already pulled to that corner. As a part of the project, we had the wiring put in place for our lighting, that'll be on photovoltaic sensor, so that it's only on during the dark hours, and pointed down onto the sign.
For Dwight, Jenny talked about, or maybe you did, the fact that there are other city buildings that don't have the similar signage. What, for example, is it?
City Hall here, yeah.
It's a different sign than the rest of them around here?
Yes. And the monument basically being, you know, you've got the two pillars, and they're typically made of brick, or constructive brick, where our typical signs we have out in the parks are wood-type posts.
On top of that, the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center has a different artistic signage that was done with tiles out there on that corner, and the police department has an interesting shield that looks like the police badges that, as a choice, I know they also have an additional sign, but there are some really interesting signs that can be artistic, too, and that was our concept behind this. When you look at the final piece, you'll look up the hill, and it'll, the cement will mimic the cement structures that we have around the parking area, but it won't be, they won't be as big, they'll be more like the city's, City Hall-sized pillars, but then the actual tiles will mimic the brick, and so the white will really pop the same way, if you look at the picture, that the windows in white really pop against the brick there, too, so it'll make it really easy to see it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make folks know that, you know, we're, we're not doing something completely different here, as far as city-owned buildings, and that is, like you say, there is precedent for it, and there, those are the examples that are out there.
I, yeah, I'm in favor of this, I think we ought to just put it on the consent agenda. I agree.
Yeah, seems like a sturdy construction design that'll be there for as long as the building is, probably, and we should go ahead and put this on a consent agenda, and it's not gonna cause any financial headaches, obviously, so let's proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Idaho Child Passenger Safety Grant, and Chief Duke's gonna present that in Alyssa's stead today, eh?
Yes, Alyssa sends her regret, she double-booked and asked me to take it.
Double-booked.
Police Department is seeking committee and council approval to submit a grant request to the Idaho Transportation Department Office of Highway Safety to continue our ongoing child safety seat program. In your packet is the application letter, the grant is for $10,000 this year, $8,830 is for the purchase of seats, and $1,170 is for the supplies that go with those. Goals of our safety seat program, as we have in the last thirteen years, are first, to provide child safety seats to low-income households at a reduced rate or for free, the second one is increase awareness and education of the proper use of child restraints through car seat safety checks, and provide one-on-one instruction on how to properly install a seat by certified technicians. Three is to train and new, or recertify our current child safety seat technicians, and lastly, we distribute education materials in our community outreach event. Last year, we were awarded $10,500 in grant funding, of that we purchased ninety-four seats through the Regional Kid Safety, Safety Team, and we trained eight new technicians. On top of that, we participated in four major community events, and inspected a total of 238 seats. There is no match for this grant, and if you approve the funding, we will ensure that we commit all, or ensure that we do all the grant activities by October 31st of this year, since we've done that in the past. So I'm open to any questions.
Dan?
Chief, you list that we have them at four community events, I know we do them at the Newville Safety Fair, or is this four events around the area?
Safety Fair was one last year, National Night Out was the second. We also had our National Car Seat Awareness Week that happened in the Walmart parking lot here, and Lewiston had a Kids Safety Fair down in theirs, and I think this year they wanna extend one more community outreach and do the same thing we do here, but in the Walmart in Pullman.
Okay. So we do a, basically, we've, we've distributed every seat that we've got so far, as far as by the end of the year, we got a couple in?
We have some in reserve, but we wanna increase our inventory to ensure that we have enough, because we might have one infant, but we might need several boosters, so we order across all lines.
Any else have any questions? Remember that we did this, we've done this in the past, and it's worked out great, and I think we should...
Absolutely.
Consent agenda this item as well.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that as well. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Unless you wanted to talk for another twenty minutes, Chief.
No, I'll pass on this.
The next thing on our agenda is the Proposed Amendment of the Relevant Criteria and Standards, and subbing for Mike Ray is Bill Bellamut. Welcome, Bill.
Good afternoon. So as a part of the ongoing update to the city's land use and development regulations, the Planning Zoning Commission's been spending time going over the relevant criteria and standards, which are generally the guidelines to review and make decisions upon land use developments or land use approvals within the city of Moscow. Per the land use, loop of the land use, Local Land Use Planning Act, any approval or denial of any application for a land use must be based upon express standards to be in writing. Those criteria are to be set forth in Comp Plan Zoning Code or other appropriate ordinance, and such approval standards shall be set forth in express terms. So it's clear that all parties that participate in that process, whether it be the applicant or any other interested party, understands the basis upon which the decisions in land use matters are made. So as a review of the relevant criteria that we have within the code for the variety of land use decisions, and these are really the major, larger class of land use decisions, we have Comp Plan Amendments, Conditional Use Permits, Planned Unit Development Permits, Special Use Permits, Subdivision Plats, Re-Zones, and Variances, and those, those are the major categories of land use applications that we have, among another, a number of other smaller administrative approval processes. Of those lists, we have established relevant criteria in ordinance for four of those, and we have three for Comp Plan Amendments, Subdivision Plats, and Re-Zones, that we've been using in practice in a written relevant criteria form, but were never adopted within the city's land use ordinance. So this effort of the Planning Zoning Commission's really been twofold, it's been to codify those three additional application types, where we have not had the relevant criteria in our ordinance, and then to go through the others and update and streamline them. We had a few that were kind of combination conjunctive phrases, and we're really, we're looking to simplify and, and clear up some of those criteria. So I'll kinda run through these fairly quickly, then you can ask any question you have here at the end. So Comp Plan Amendments is one of those criteria that we did not have in the code, so we have the commission-developed language for the review and approval for any amendment, amendment to the Comp Plan under the following criteria: that a proposed comprehensive plan amendment is consistent with the Comp Plan goals, objectives, and implementation actions; that a proposed comprehensive plan amendment would provide for the logical and orderly location of land uses, community services, and facilities; the use is expected to occur as a result of the comprehensive plan amendment would be compatible with the surrounding area; the size, type, and density of development expected to occur as a result of the designation would not place an undue burden upon delivery of services provided by any political subdivision within the planning jurisdiction; and the proposed Comp Plan Amendment is deemed to be appropriate in consideration of changing conditions within the community that are not reflected within the current comprehensive plan, such as new development or redevelopment, land use patterns and/or trends, traffic patterns and/or volume, market demands, community vision and/or needs, capital improvements, or new or revised city plans. Because it's really, the Comp Plan is, you'd be amending that long-range vision, and you periodically have to update it due to changes that have happened within the community, and those are some examples of what those changes might be. As you move to Condition Use Permits, the criteria remained largely consistent with what they exist today. The proposed use is a listed conditionally permitted use within the district; the character of the proposed use will be in harmony with the neighborhood and the surrounding land uses; the proposed use is approved, or is approved with conditions; will not generate nuisances that would be injurious or detrimental to adjoining properties or the neighborhood; the location, design, and size of the proposed uses will be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services; the proposed use will not endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed, and if proposed use meets all applicable development standards of the zoning code, it will not be in conflict with the comprehensive plan. So fairly general criteria for the Condition Use Permits. As you look at Planned Unit Developments, that was one category where we had, I think there were about twelve criteria previously that had been streamlined a little bit. Those would now be proposed to read, that the proposed PUD is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that it's consistent with the intents and purposes of that chapter, the Planning and Development Chapter, that it's compatible with the character and uses in the surrounding area, that the location, design, and size of the proposed PUD will be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services; that proposed PUD will not endanger the public health or safety, and the residential density's proposed land uses and design proposed within the PUD promote the innovative, efficient, economic, and attractive development of subject property, which is really getting back to the intents and purposes of Planned Unit Developments. As, looking to Variances, we did simplify a couple items in there, so there really were two criteria that were eliminated in the update. The first is the applicant has demonstrated that there are special conditions and/or circumstances that exist which are peculiar to the property, such as size, shape, topography, or location, which are not applicable to other properties similarly situated in the same zoning district; that the applicant has demonstrated that because of the aforementioned special conditions of the property, application of the provisions of this zoning code would impose undue hardship and would deprive the property owner of rights commonly enjoyed by owners of other properties similarly situated in the same zoning district under the terms of this zoning code. And then finally, granting the variance would not be in conflict with the public interest or injuries to property or persons in the vicinity of subject property. There were two criteria that were there previously, the first which was that the variance wasn't granting a special privilege, which quite honestly, on its face, it is to some degree, it's not to give them a greater right, but it's to provide them the same rights that other property owners have. So that was a little bit of a troubling one. And the other was that the, the desire, or the need for the variance wasn't resulted in the actions of the applicant, and typically they are related to some action of the applicant wishing to do something with their property. So we did eliminate those two, and just simplified it to the three remaining criteria under Variances. For subdivision plats, again, the proposed subdivision is in, is in conformance with all applicable city code requirements; the proposed subdivision is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan; that public services and utilities are available or can be made available and are adequate to accommodate the proposed subdivision; the proposed subdivision will not be detrimental to the public, health, safety, or general welfare, was the last one, under subdivisions. And then as we look at zoning district amendments, the proposed rezone is consistent with the comprehensive plan goals, objectives, and implementation actions; the proposed rezone would provide for the logical and orderly location of land uses and community services and facilities; the use is expected to occur as a result of the rezone will be compatible with the surrounding area; and the size, type, and density of development expected to occur as a result of the rezone will not place an undue burden upon delivery of services provided by any political subdivision within the planning jurisdiction. That one's fairly long, it's actually directly out of the state, state code, that has to be a criteria to be evaluated for rezones. And then the finals, the size, type, and density of development expected to occur as a result of the rezone can be adequately served by existing transportation network, public facilities, and services. So the Planning Zoning Commission, as I mentioned, has been reviewing this over the course of the last several months, they actually looked at criteria from several different cities to kinda compare with other criteria utilized, utilized by cities both within the state of Idaho and within the state of Washington. They've settled on what's being proposed to you, and they conducted their public hearing on March 9th, and recommend approval to the city council, and this has been scheduled for public hearing before the council at your upcoming meeting on April 4th. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Doc?
I don't, I have a question, Bill, but it, it appears to me as though you generally put the umbrella over the whole process, and then with each one of them, you just reinforced what it might mean to that particular part, and I have no problem with it. I think it answers the questions, and with each individual situation, it goes into a little bit more detail, and so I support this all the way.
Yeah, at the same time, it's simplified, and brought things in, in, so it's easier to see it, and, and the comparison with the other cities seems to be...
You're not reinventing the wheel.
We're not reinventing the wheel, and we had a lot of combination, we had a lot of unmedicable impacts, or does or does not, you know, there were, there were several clauses within existing criteria, and in most things, we did try to break them out and simplify them on individual...
Well, and it, it, just, like you say, it simplifies it, this is almost, this is exactly the same as county zoning is, you know, with their, with their relevant criteria and everything, everything, just, if it meets these, then it can, then you can do it, but you gotta make sure it meets these. If it doesn't, then these will, you know, it gives, it's the tool for the, whatever, be it the commission or at the council level, it says that you can give the yay or nay, and, you know, kinda cleans up the chance of appeals for, you know, missteps throughout the process.
And I think it's really important that we get those three different application types, you know, some of our largest applications, zoning and subdivision passing, and get those criteria in the code. I guess currently, right now, they're only in a piece of paper, the city's been utilizing for a number of years, and I think it's really good to get that memorialized. I mean, we've been compliant, they have established criteria, everybody's aware of it, it's on the application, it's in all of our forms, but I think it's good to standardize that and get that in the code.
So there's no surprises when somebody's trying to develop or change things, they know what to expect upfront.
If the public or the applicant wish to seek out what are the criteria that this decision would base upon, and it's clearly in the code and available to everyone.
Yeah, I'd, I would recommend approval, but, you know, we gotta have the public hearing, I guess.
Right, about what we can do is recommend that this be forwarded to council for a public hearing, is what we should do now, on the regular agenda, although I don't know who's keeping track of that, I suppose Lori is not.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, the next thing on our agenda is the sanitation rate study. Tim Davis is gonna regale us with everything we always wanted to know about.
Talking trash.
Sanitation is seeking council approval to conduct a rate study update. The first comprehensive sanitation rate study was conducted in 2012 by FCS Group, they're out of Redmond, Washington. When they conducted that rate study, the sanitation fund was broke down into two categories. We had the collection piece, and then we had the solid waste processing facility piece. The main findings that were indicated in the first rate study was that the collection services were being charged more than what that actual cost of service was, and tipping fees out of the solid waste processing facility were not covering the full cost of service out at the, the plant out there. At that time, after that rate study was approved by council, adjustments were made. The beginning of the fiscal year 2013 budget to correct some of those imbalances. Since then, we haven't held right online with the rate study, and some of that is due to contractual obligations with the county and the other cities for disposal. We are restricted to adjusting those tipping fee rates out of the solid waste processing facility based on the Consumer Price Index, rather than the, the rate study called for a 3% tipping fee increase each year immediately through the year 2020, and we have not been able to do that. The other thing that comes into play is we have two new programs in sanitation, fairly large programs. We've got the roll cart solid waste collection program, and the just recently implemented single-stream recycling program as well. And we may have some changing needs with regards to relocation or possible expansion of the recycle center. So updating the sanitation rate study financial model will ensure that we can meet the future capital goals of sanitation, as well as remain fair and equitable with our rates and fees. Staff has approached FCS Group and requested a scope of work and a budget, which I believe is in your packet, and that budget came in just, just shy of $20,000. FCS has also indicated that they can conduct this update within about a thirty-day period of receiving all the data that they requested for this rate study, providing that we keep up our end as far as the meetings and so forth, so they're willing to do this on a rather fast track. With that, I'd be up for questions.
So this is, this is to happen during the '17 budget year, is, is what we're working for, or to get done before the '17 budget?
I am requesting to do that immediately.
Okay.
In the fiscal year 2016.
So then you can take tho, that, those numbers and work into the next budget?
And we can work that into the 2017 budget, and the other thing that comes into play is those contractual obligations with the county and the city come due in 2018, but we, if, if it looks like that, those adjustments need to be changed from where we're at, and it may turn out that we're just fine, we're not real sure on that, but... We're not real sure on that, but if we have to adjust those rates, we can sit down with the county and the cities and say, you know, would you like to start adjusting that now, or do you want to take a big hit in 2018? And that's probably something they want to avoid.
And I guess that's the, that's my next thing, is what's the feeling right now as far as how healthy things are going? You know, we, all the, I mean, everything's changed in here really, really big in the last three years, so.
We don't have a lot of data on the single stream recycling yet, but my first month's billing came in, and it looked right on par with some of our projections. So I'm real confident that that's going to work out. When we implemented the roll cart solid waste collection, I used the data from the rate study, and, I mean, I broke it clear down to the gallon. How much do we charge per gallon? And we converted those volume charges over. So going through my preliminary budget, I believe things are healthy. But that being said, I want to make sure that we're still continuing down the right path and.
Whatever escalators were planned in there.
Yeah, and some of the assumptions and projections that were made back in 2012 have obviously changed.
Well, we were having garbage cans and.
Exactly, exactly. But, I mean, some of the CPI projections, they used a five-year average previous to that, and we haven't even come close to that. And that's why I don't know if not adjusting those tipping fees right to the T of what the rate study said has really hurt us, or if the CPI just kind of takes care of itself. I'm just, I'm not that in-depth of a financial analyst, but going through the preliminary budget, everything looks pretty, pretty healthy to me.
Daridner?
Yeah, Tim sent most of the high points. The study that we did was, what, three, four years ago? 2011, 12. I think it was adopted in 12. Yeah, 12. So we're about four years ago that we did that. The big programs we've got going, the inequity between the tipping fee and the collection fee was something that we really sought to adjust, so we need to make sure that we're doing that. So we're, because we have different customers who take advantage of the tipping fee, as opposed to our customers that utilize both the tipping fee and the, and the collection fee, so that's got to be kept up. Additionally, one of the major challenge areas that the council adopted in the strategic plan is that the recycling center expansion and perhaps relocation needs to be looked at. So we've been accumulating funding for that, as well as for some other programs. The funding that Tim's identified, almost $20,000 to do this update to the rate study, would be taken out of those funds, out of the funds for solid waste development. So we've planned for this, and it seems the sooner we can get it done, the better, especially with the impending programs or impending contracts that we've got going. Tim's getting ready, if he's not already, sent a letter out reflecting some contractual issues regarding increases in our ultimate disposal site fees that by contract have to be passed on to the customers. So, you know, these contracts are, they're always moving. We have to do what they're, what we contracted to do, so this is a good way to make sure that we've got the rate that'll support that.
Yeah, I think like a lot of budgetary items, it's a moving target, and if you can make adjustments as you go along, as you stated, Tim, instead of coming up on a year 2018 and saying, oh, boy. If we can make the adjustments up and down as we need to as we go along, and we've got some funding with the solid waste to make that happen, I think we ought to make that recommendation.
Yeah, I'd recommend approval as well.
I can't say any reason why not to do this. It's good that we, I think, maintain inequity in what we're charging for tipping fees and collection, and one's not subsidizing the other. It's not fair to those that take everything to the transfer station, that they pay less or too much, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
As far as the new, the new single stream recycling program, the numbers are pretty good on that. There's, things are coming in like you expect in terms of contamination. We're not expecting.
I actually got, I actually received one of the first reports from the MRF, and we were, excuse me, we were under 5%, so that's in the excellent range. I was real happy with that.
Good job, Moscow.
Yeah, Moscow has done a great job. LeTas sanitation in Moscow Recycling took a lot of time and effort that first month to really go through and look things over as things were being collected, and for the most part, we obviously seen a little more contamination at the apartments than we did in the residential areas. Those folks haven't been introduced to curbside recycling, so this is all new to them, but I was ecstatic with those numbers, and, you know, our tonnages are up, the revenues came in just about as projected, so everything's on track.
What, Tim, what, you said that we were within 5%. What would be the best we could ever expect? I know that we're never going to get it down to.
I think, you know, I've been told by people in, in the business, larger companies than, of course, what we run here in Moscow, but they said anything between 5 and 15 would be considered very good, and anything under 5% is excellent. So I'd just like to stay in that excellent range. You know, if we keep it, you know, between 2 and 4%, that would be awesome. And it just helps keep the cost of everything down, because we don't end up having to pay for all that contamination, and I think.
And it also means people are listening and paying attention.
Absolutely. They're doing a great job.
When, when we were talking about bringing in the roll carts, I remember the number that we got from Pullman was somewhere around 2% when we were talking about, when we had the fiasco about the wrong colored carts and how much contamination, how much that would cost us. So at 4%, how much, do you know how much we're having to pay for contamination at this point? It's like $123 a ton or something?
$120 a ton. The other thing that we need to realize is Pullman does accept glass in there, so that 1.5% is just the outthrow contamination, and the glass, I believe, is another, I'm going to guess in the 10 to 12% range, which they pay back to take. And that's considered a contamination.
They pay extra to be able to put the glass in.
Absolutely.
Plus to fix their machinery from the glass.
We're in terror that Whitman County's now facing to replace their baler liners and their conveyors and everything else that goes along with it in the processing.
Do you know what the number is so far on how much it's costing us for contamination at the 4% rate? How much are we having to pay extra at this point?
We haven't paid any yet. I'll know more after we get a couple months under our belt.
Also, does LSI share with you the, the amount of revenue that they get from the recycled materials that they sell? They get the proceeds from that, but I just.
I know in the first month, after shipping costs, which they pay, they netted about $66.
And the black.
On revenue. And that's simply because the markets are in a, recycling markets are in and have been in a downturn for some time, and those markets are just like any other markets, they fluctuate.
Have you figured out how to get that $66 from them yet?
I haven't twisted their arm too hard on that one yet.
They're still twisting their arm on the cart resale.
Yeah.
Has that, has there been any progress made on that?
I did get a phone call from a gentleman in Colorado that was interested, and I got them in touch with LSI. They were getting ready to implement a yard waste program down there, and I have not heard the outcome of that, but they were very interested, so.
It's another prospect.
How soon, Tim? Before we talk about yard waste carts.
What I'd like to do is implement single stream on a commercial level here in town, possibly this summer, and then, you know, after that, I think anytime, maybe next fall, we can talk about that, or do it in time for implementation next spring, if council so chooses. That'll be an easy one after these last two.
We got it figured out. Just long we get the color right the first time.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I, like I say, I'd recommend approval. Probably this is a consent item.
I think it could be a consent agenda item, yeah. Move it forward. Proceed with the study, and let's know where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, that's the last item on our regular agenda. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order here?
I do not.
Then I guess I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So entertained.
Checkmate.
We're adjourned.